Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, April 1st, 2005. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us for members of the public unable to attend council meetings. We can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is now just past 10:20 a.m. and we have eight members present, two shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. Let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti to begin today's meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, members of the public. It gives me great joy today to be able to present to you a group of women who, many of whom are familiar to you, here in the city of Los Angeles and here specifically also in City Hall. They make up LAW PAC, which has more As than any other PAC I know, but it's the Los Angeles African American Women's PAC, Political Action Committee, promoting leadership among African American women and the issues that are important to women and African Americans here in Los Angeles throughout our city and beyond. And in a very short time have established themselves not only just as one of the most professional political action committees here in Los Angeles, but also one that is looking at generational leadership. And I think why it's so moving to me to see what they are doing is oftentimes people come together as a political action committee for their own self-interests, and that's good, that's politics, people do that. But when people also think about those who will be coming after them and grooming leadership and making sure that they develop an infrastructure and a network of leaders for tomorrow, not just for today, it's greater than something that's self-serving. It is beyond the individuals and it is for a higher cause. To give you a little bit of the history of LAW PAC, it's the first African American Women's Political Action Committee in California itself, an incredibly historical event. It was founded in 1991 to bring African American women squarely into the political arena and to support the individuals and issues that address the social, economic, and educational concerns of the African American committee. From candidate forums and issue forums to engaging in specific races as well, they've developed workshops and leadership training to make sure that those issues aren't forgotten and that we ask the question not only who is at the table and what is being said, but who is not at the table and what is not being said as well. They've established a nonprofit Public Policy Institute as well, the Los Angeles African American Women's Public Policy Institute. And the ultimate goal is to train a pool of leaders for community and public service to fill these very halls, the halls of the county, the halls of Sacramento, to make sure in Washington there's representation, but also in the community itself, to make sure that there are leaders in business, that there are leaders in the nonprofit community, to make sure that within the city family itself, that we don't just settle for the top of the cake looking good, but that the middle of the cake must too reflect this city and its great diversity. Los Angeles African American Women's Political Action Committee has also hosted a Women's Award Days, which celebrate and honor women who have attained widespread success in these different areas of politics, of business, of education, of labor, of the arts, and culture as well. And these are women whose success have translated into improving the city that we live in and the hope that young people see in mirroring themselves in the possibilities of what they can have in their own lives as well. The Power PAC Award, which is, I love the name of that, has been awarded to folks including Barbara Jordan, very first honoree, Rosa Parks, Supervisors Gloria Molina and Yvonne Burke, Congresswoman Juanita McDonnell Milander and Diane Watson, and former Senator Carol Mosley Braun, a presidential candidate, Debbie Allen, film director Julie Dash, and Margie Reese, our own general manager of the Cultural Affairs Department, have also been honored as well. This will not only mark the coming in of a new board, but the continuation of leadership throughout LAW PAC, the way that they look at leadership, not in a selfish way, but in a selfless way. I think all of us are judged not by the accomplishments that we have as individuals, but the organizations and the legacies that we build, and certainly I can think of no one that we should be more proud of in this city than LAW PAC. So we have, among others here today, we've got Jackie Hawthorne, our chairwoman, Stanley Viltz, Vice Chair, actually I don't know if Stanley, is it Stanley? There you go, right there. Velma Marshall, Celestine Palmer, sorry, we've got the outgoing and the ingoing, so I should do it that way. Jackie, Stanley, Velma, Treasurer, Jackie Horton Recording Secretary, Tanette Lansdowne, Corresponding Secretary, Mary Ann Green, the Financial Secretary, and then we have coming in, Celestine, it's the opposite, okay, the former board, I'm sorry, I should know that. Celestine Palmer is the outgoing chairwoman, Jackie Hawthorne was the vice chair, now elevated to the chairwoman, Sonya Hooks was the corresponding secretary, Joy Henley, the Financial Secretary, Velma Marshall was previously the recording secretary, and Carolyn Tyler Gidry, the Treasurer. I'm going to give, because it is about the transition too, even though this happened a couple of months ago, we talked about coming into council and honoring that transition, both Celestine and Jackie, the honor of saying a few words to all of us, and why don't we start with Celestine and then we'll bring in the new leadership and hear from Jackie?
Good morning, Los Angeles. I would just like to say thank you for this esteemed honor, and we are truly honored. To be honored for something that is our passion is in itself an honor. One of the things that always motivated me was the ideal of having public service equal for everyone, and of course, being a public servant, you know that it's our dream that we will all be at the table to have our own wishes in our, wishes for our community to be materialized. One of the things that motivated me was when I was, in my early years, I looked at the least in the classroom, and those were the children that I had the compassion for and wanted someone to be the spokesperson for, and sought to make sure that the best teachers were teaching those who had the least to, and also made sure that they were given the best opportunities. And it's true in our own lives and in the city and in government, is to look at the least of us and make sure that they are given the best, and the only way to do that is that we are there at the table, making those decisions and deciding and making choices.[658.91]
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, April 1st, 2005. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is now just past 10:20 a.m. and we have eight members present, two shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special presentations and introductions to be made. Let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti to begin today's meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, members of the public. It gives me great joy today to be able to present to you a group of women who, many of whom are familiar to you, here in the city of Los Angeles and here specifically also in City Hall. They make up Law PAC, which has more As than any other PAC I know, but it's the Los Angeles African American Women's PAC Political Action Committee, promoting leadership among African American women and the issues that are important to women and African Americans here in Los Angeles throughout our city and beyond. And in a very short time have established themselves not only just as one of the most professional political action committees here in Los Angeles, but also one that is looking at generational leadership. And I think why it's so moving to me to see what they are doing is oftentimes people come together as a political action committee for their own self-interests. And that's good. That's politics. People do that. But when people also think about those who will be coming after them and grooming leadership and making sure that they develop an infrastructure and a network of leaders for tomorrow, not just for today, it's greater than something that's self-serving. It is beyond the individuals and it is for a higher cause. To give you a little bit of the history of Law PAC, it's the first African American Women's Political Action Committee in California, itself an incredibly historical event. It was founded in 1991 to bring African American women squarely into the political arena and to support the individuals and issues that address the social, economic, and educational concerns of the African American committee. From candidate forums and issue forums to engaging in specific races as well, they've developed workshops and leadership training to make sure that those issues aren't forgotten and that we ask the question not only who is at the table and what is being said, but who is not at the table and what is not being said as well. They've established a nonprofit Public Policy Institute as well, the Los Angeles African American Women's Public Policy Institute. And the ultimate goal is to train a pool of leaders for community and public service to fill these very halls, the halls of the county, the halls of Sacramento, to make sure in Washington there's representation, but also in the community itself, to make sure that there are leaders in business, that there are leaders in the nonprofit community, to make sure that within the city family itself, that we don't just settle for the top of the cake looking good, but that the middle of the cake must too reflect this city and its great diversity. Los Angeles African American Women's Political Action Committee has also hosted a Women's Award Days, which celebrate and honor women who have attained widespread success in these different areas of politics, of business, of education, of labor, of the arts and culture as well. And these are women whose success have translated into improving the city that we live in and the hope that young people see in mirroring themselves in the possibilities of what they can have in their own lives as well. The Power PAC Award, which is, I love the name of that, has been awarded to folks including Barbara Jordan, very first honoree, Rosa Parks, supervisors Gloria Molina and Yvonne Burke, Congresswoman Juanita McDonnell Milander and Diane Watson, and former Senator Carol Mosley Braun, a presidential candidate, Debbie Allen, film director Julie Dash, and Margie Reese, our own general manager of the Cultural Affairs Department, have also been honored as well. This will not only mark the coming in of a new board, but the continuation of leadership throughout Law PAC, the way that they look at leadership, not in a selfish way, but in a selfless way. I think all of us are judged not by the accomplishments that we have as individuals, but the organizations and the legacies that we build. And certainly, I can think of no one that we should be more proud of in this city than Law PAC. So we have, among others here today, we've got Jackie Hawthorne, our chairwoman, Stanley Viltz, Vice Chair, actually I don't know if Stanley, is it Stanley? There you go, right there. Velma Marshall, Celestine Palmer, sorry, we've got the outgoing and the ingoing, so I should do it that way. Jackie, Stanley, Velma, Treasurer, Jackie Horton Recording Secretary, Tanette Lansdowne, Corresponding Secretary, Mary Ann Green, the Financial Secretary, and then we have coming in, it's the opposite, okay, the former board, I'm sorry, I should know that. Celestine Palmer is the outgoing chairwoman, Jackie Hawthorne was the Vice Chair, now elevated to the Chairwoman, Sonya Hooks was the Corresponding Secretary, Joy Henley, Financial Secretary, Velma Marshall was previously the Recording Secretary, and Carolyn Tyler Gidry, Treasurer. I'm going to give, because it is about the transition too, even though this happened a couple of months ago, we talked about coming into council and honoring that transition, both Celestine and Jackie, the honor of saying a few words to all of us. And why don't we start with Celestine and then we'll bring in the new leadership and hear from Jackie.
Good morning, Los Angeles. I would just like to say thank you for this esteemed honor and we are truly honored. To be honored for something that is our passion is in itself an honor. One of the things that always motivated me was the ideal of having public service equal for everyone. And of course, being a public servant, you know that it's our dream that we will all be at the table to have our own wishes, in our, wishes for our community to be materialized. One of the things that motivated me was when I was, in my early years, I looked at the least in the classroom and those were the children that I had the compassion for and wanted someone to be the spokesperson for and sought to make sure that the best teachers were teaching those who had the least to, and also made sure that they were given the best opportunities. And it's true in our own lives and in the city and in government, is to look at the least of us and make sure that they are given the best. And the only way to do that is that we are there at the table, making those decisions and deciding and making sure that our point and our personal efforts are put forth. And indeed, that's been my passion, not for myself, but to see to it that those who need it are the ones who get the most help. And I pulled my good friends who have the same passion and asked them to come forth and do that. And that's what motivates Law PAC to continue to be a public service to this community and throughout the country. And of course, our efforts have been indeed brought forth and fulfilled in our Public Policy Institute and also in our National PAC that we've now launched, started from the members here behind me and with me at this point. So I just want to say we are truly honored and as the outgoing chair, I feel honored to be here and to know that Law PAC will continue in this same legacy of doing for those who want more for themselves. And I thank you very much.
Good morning, Los Angeles. My name is Jackie Hawthorne. I am the incoming chair. And even though Celestine Palmer is short in stature, although she thinks she's tall, I have some big, big, big shoes to follow. She has been the only chair of Law PAC. She was one of the founders, along with some of our other members, Joy Atkinson, who's here. And she has been the only president in all of this time, up until through 2004, and she has seen two of her dreams come to fruition through this organization and the wonderful women that are part of this organization. We serve to serve our community. We have a passion for service. We are not paid. We do it through our own blood, sweat, and tears without compensation, and it is a joy to do so. And she mentioned that through our efforts, we have launched a Public Policy Institute where we are training young women to come into the public arena, not just as candidates, but in all of the infrastructure, all of the electoral process, all areas, all levels, so that we can have healthy infrastructures. Women with honesty, integrity, commitment, and a passion for service. We also launched a National PAC that will help African American candidates, particularly women candidates, but not just women candidates, across the nation to get elected. It is a truism, and I'm sure you know, that African American women come into the political arena with less funding than most candidates. And it is to those that we reach out, those with the least, and try to do, to give them a level playing field. We're so happy to have you recognize the work that we do because we think it is an important work. Thank you so much for recognizing her, recognizing her and us. One little aside, when Councilman Garcetti was reading the names, he read the name of Carolyn Tyler Gidry. The reason she's no longer an officer, she has been appointed a bishop in her church, elected a bishop in her church, the second female bishop ever in the history of the AME Church. And our Celestine Palmer is now her executive assistant and doing a real tough job, but someone's got to do it traveling through the Caribbean, such a tough job. And that's why she's stepping down. But thank you for this honor today. We really appreciate it.
Let me recognize Ms. Misakowski at this time.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Garcetti for bringing you here. And as you talked about what motivated you and what programs you put, I know you only need to look back and see an actual example of one of those programs. And I'd like to introduce Monique Ford, who is standing with you, who is a member of my staff, who actually went to the Public Policy Committee. And I know that she looks to all of you as to what has motivated her. So you have living proof of that example of what you are inspiring. And I also look, you're not just there as teachers, you're also there, as we all know, as doers, because among you I see commissioners, I see women who are doing professional things in all different fields. So you're not only teaching, you're teaching by doing. And I just want to congratulate you and say that it's been exciting. And I just, I know as Monique has told me about the things that she has done by what she learned and felt empowered by what you gave to her, that you really should be justifiably proud and that you're going national, I think, is the best credit. And we've all heard as women candidates and women in office of the success of groups like Emily's List and Elevating Women, and that you may do the same and should do the same and must do the same for African American women throughout this country is a great credit. And then to know that it started here is a great tribute to you for the years that you're putting in and the years yet ahead of really great success. So congratulations to you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and congratulate you and thank you for your hard work. When I look at the statistics and we see our challenges, when we have children having children, when you have the dropout rates, you see who is most vulnerable when it comes to AIDS. These are very real circumstances we have in our communities and we don't have enough role models.
Yes.
So I just want to thank you for standing up, for celebrating not only your accomplishments, but the light that you are creating for many who are feeling that they are alone in the dark. You have brought forth that light, you're showing them a direction. I just want to thank you for all that you do for our young people. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll just award these certificates now and Councilmember Bernard Parks has co-signed these. Obviously, he is just as passionate about Law PAC as I am. We can't politic here in the city council, but I know that all political action committees, people can join and people can support. So just as a matter of fact, remember that when you are thinking about your seasonal giving as well. So with that, I will give each one of these out to our awardees and then please, if you'll honor them with a round of applause. Stanley Viltz.
Thank you.
Jackie Hawthorne. Tanette Lansdowne. Mary Ann Green. Velma Marshall. Jackie Horton. Celestine Palmer.
Thank you.
Sonya Hooks. Joy Henley. Carolyn Tyler Gidry, which you can hang on to. Jackie Hawthorne. Look at that, she gets two. And Velma Marshall. Because if you're in-going and outgoing, you get two. So please, again, congratulations to all of them and we'll make sure we get that. And thank you, congratulations to Law PAC. Mr. President, for second presentation, I'd like to invite Mark Kiroz forward as well. Okay. Mark Kiroz is a U.S. Navy Petty Officer with IBU-16 Squadron 33. And we wanted to honor him before he goes off to his service here as a resident of Los Angeles and as a community activist in Glassell Park. He's not only been involved in my office, with my office, sorry, as a constituent, but Mark has also been a friend, along with Maggie, his fiancee, and their daughter Paulina, who are really the rocks of Glassell Park. I know that Mr. Reyes knows the family well and longtime friend as well. And Mark and Maggie have been very involved in the neighborhood, have walked the neighborhood with them, and everybody knows who they are and they know everybody. Mark's been involved with the Glassell Park Neighborhood Council, the Glassell Park Improvement Association, but his devotion to the community doesn't just end in Glassell Park. His devotion truly is boundless and his will to help is unmatched. And that's why we have him here today, not only somebody who serves his community and his city, but someone who serves his very country as well, as a U.S. Navy reservist who is preparing to depart once again, this time to Iraq. Anyone in my office that's been fortunate to work with Mark, folks like Mitch O'Farrell, Christina Ortega, who are here today, can tell you that he is genuine, proactive, supportive, selfless, and the list could go on and on. It is an emotional thing, as you can see today, the families and the human beings when we are a nation at war and the folks who actually go and do their service to this country. We owe them our highest gratitude and our highest honors. And so today I wanted to be able to thank Mark. We know we'll be welcoming him back here in Los Angeles very soon, but to wish Mark, in one year, a very, very safe deployment. We will wait patiently as your year in Iraq is complete. Keep in touch with us. Let us know how things are going. We'll be thinking of you. We'll be waiting for you, our local hero, to return. So please join me in honoring Mark Kiroz.
Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Mark, I've known you and Maggie for many years. Colleagues, Mark and Maggie, when I first ran for office, put me through several tests. There was dumping sites in their neighborhood, there were issues with graffiti. We tackled them, we worked with them, we gave them the information on that day. And Mark was telling me, you know, I just wanted to test you, I didn't know you, but you responded, you did the work. And from then on, Mark has been, and Maggie have been, strong advocates for the community and they took on everybody. When a senator came into the area and talked about a project, it was Maggie who stood up from everyone, everyone just nodded their head, yes, yes, Senator, yes, Senator. And it was her voice that emerged from the whole group and essentially made all the authorities accountable. And it just blew me away and how strong she was in making sure she addressed issues of parking, accessibility, who's going to make it to the school, how are we going to preserve the building. And Mark has been one of those undying supporters of our community. So I believe you're a hero already, Mark.
Thank you.
I believe you and Maggie have been a hero because you do step up when everyone else gets comfortable in their home, chooses to stay at home and not attend community meetings, especially when you have strong leadership like Eric, because I used to have that area in my district. I lost in the redistricting.
We still love you, though.
But I keep saying, our community is not about political boundaries, it's about communities. And so we have been working together. And from the bottom of my heart, I wish you great luck and you'll be back.
Thank you.
And we'll be continuing to take care of our communities and watch over Maggie and your daughter. And my heartfelt thanks to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys. And since September 11th, this has been my third deployment, which is almost consistently three years in a row. There's not anything I would not do for this nation, first and foremost, to support and defend this constitution, as well as I know anyone else who's in a uniform or that serves for the city or any other official would not do. I'm honored. It's nice, really nice for once to be recognized by the city for being in the military, other than just being recognized by the military. It really, it really, I don't know how to say it, but I don't know, it makes you feel appreciated and it's really good. But three years consistently, my military career, 15 years, 15 long years, and thank God to the support of my lovely fiancee here and my little girl. They're definitely my backbone. So I thank you very much and I'm honored. Thank you.
Colleagues and members of the public, actually, before proceeding to the next presentation, if I can ask you all to please rise and share a moment of silence with me. We have received news reports, not yet confirmed by the Vatican, but news reports that the Pope has passed away. If you would all please join me in a moment of silence for the spirit of Pope John Paul. Thank you very much. Colleagues, we'll await, as is customary, for the adjourned motion segment of today's meeting for any tributes, once we've received confirmation from the Vatican. Let's continue with our meeting. Let me call forward Mr. Zine for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Grul and I are joining this presentation for members of law enforcement, the second finest law enforcement agency in the county of Los Angeles, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Let's hear it for the LSO. And probation department. There's always that rivalry with the Los Angeles Police Department, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and we know that you folks are great, but being a member of the LAPD, still a reserve officer, we always like to tease our brothers in the tan and green uniform, who will protect and serve the residents of the county of Los Angeles and work side by side with our representatives of the Los Angeles Police Department, other departments, and our probation department. And we have a early morning call one morning. Councilmember Grul and I joined a task force of officers from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles Police Department, school police, railroad police, probation department, California Highway Patrol. Who am I forgetting? Railroad, I've got railroad, school, LAPD, Highway Patrol. We had them all there. And we were there at a roll call briefing at the early time of 5:00 a.m. when this group of dedicated law enforcement officers coordinated a major task force operation to rid our community vandalism and graffiti and all of the other negatives that destroy the quality of life. The sting operation was conducted on January 17th, held as a means of reducing crimes ranging from writing on the walls to homicides. The operation coordinated by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, probation department, and all those other agencies that I mentioned was a combined coordinated effort. 150 law enforcement officers conducted probation compliance checks at 71 locations, resulted in the arrest and/or violation of probation of 32 individuals. The main targets were probationers who have a criminal history of vandalism and graffiti-related crimes. There were eight firearms seized, several replica firearms seized, narcotics, assortment of other weapons, $4,500 in cash related to narcotic sales. Officers present assisted with providing the names of the probationers, researching their backgrounds, completed the location packet and confirming addresses. And this coordinated effort is an ongoing effort by law enforcement in this region to reduce the incidence of gang violence, reduce the incidence of graffiti, and all of the other associated factors. And the operation was called Tag This, Ride This. And we have, Councilmember Grul and I have decided that... And we have, Councilmember Gruel and I have decided that we need to recognize the work of these dedicated members of law enforcement, and from the different disciplines, the different agencies, but in particular, the Transit Bureau of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, that does have the contract to provide safety and security for all the transit operations within the city of Los Angeles, and for the county of Los Angeles. And we're going to do some presentations in a few moments, and my early morning colleague, who joined me at 5:00 a.m. that day, and we did go on a couple of locations on a couple of the raids that took place, Councilmember Wendy Gruel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine. And I think the most impressive thing that morning was the number of individuals, not only the early time period at 5:00 a.m., but it was the numbers of individuals who were there, and the coordinated effort that the Sheriff's Department took the leadership role on, in ensuring that we had every level of law enforcement participating in this. But it also demonstrated that we know that tagging and graffiti oftentimes is a sign of a problem individual, or an individual who may graduate to that next level of gang, graduate to some of the other law enforcement problems. And when we stood that afternoon at 2:00 and had behind us a number of, as Mr. Zine mentioned, weapons and illegal drugs, we knew that this was a problem and we needed to focus on. And so I know that they have had many other task forces, many other sting operations where they have gone and enforced the probation, I think that's really, and thanked the probation department today, because that was the source and the ability of the legal search, because when someone is convicted of tagging, they are not allowed to own some of those pens and, as well as the spray paint that could be used at another location. And so I want to thank them for their commitment, their dedication, and particularly, I think, their creativity in bringing this type of task force together. And it demonstrates that when we work together, the city, and the county, and the state, and probation department, that we in fact can address this issue. Most importantly, we are sending a message, that we will not tolerate, we will not accept graffiti in our neighborhoods, it brings down the quality of life, and we will continue to work together to make that success. So we wanted to, and Dennis and I spoke about it that morning at 5:00 a.m., about the importance of recognizing, we said 5:00 a.m. enough, people know we really work hard now at 5:00 a.m., but that we wanted to acknowledge them for their commitment. So I'm pleased to stand here with my colleague, Councilmember Zine, and representatives from the Sheriff's Department and probation, and I think we're now going to have certificates of appreciation. But I think first and foremost, if we could all give them a great round of applause for their coordinated effort on tagging.
And we have the supervising deputy probation officer from the probation department, Craig The deputy probation officer, Laura Bryce. We have the captain of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, who's the captain of the transit operations, and a real man, a Harley riding man, Captain Dan Finkelstein, Captain Dan. Deputy Steven Schneider from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. A man who started with the Los Angeles Police Department, and decided to go to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, he was a classmate with my son Christopher at the LAPD, joined the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Deputy Justin Diaz, who also attended high school with my son, who are both involved in law enforcement. And a man who arrested Felipe Fuentes a few times, I think so? Felipe, you said you grew up with this young man, who's the deputy with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's, Jose De La Cruz. I know he never arrested you, but you guys grew up together, I needed to mention that to you. All these deputies work the field, the probation officers work in coordination with them in a very cooperative effort, and we just wanted to take a few moments to acknowledge and show our respect for what they do. This is not the first, nor is it the last operation they're going to conduct, so those that want to go out and destroy the community know that law enforcement's there to maintain the quality of life in our community. And I just want, before I forget to mention, $1,000 reward for anyone who brings forward an individual who's doing graffiti in the city of Los Angeles, there's a $1,000 reward. We'd like to mention that to the people of Los Angeles, get $1,000, once we can arrest and convict those folks for committing those crimes. Captain, you got the microphone.
I'd like to thank Dennis and Wendy for recognizing us, and I think the key to this operation was the teamwork that was worked out between the Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles Police Department, probation department, and many other agencies and disciplines that were involved. As should be obvious, taggers have no sense of jurisdictional boundaries, and whether they're tagging a bus owned by MTA, a freeway overpass owned by the state, or privately-owned cities, privately-owned buildings or cities, that we need to work together, and that's what it's going to take to stop this. I'd also like to thank, from the support we received, for the city council members in their role as MTA board members, Ed Reyes, Tom Labange, and Martin Ludlow, we couldn't do this without the support that we received from all of you. So again, thank you for recognizing us today.
If it wasn't probation, we wouldn't be able to put all these programs together with the law enforcement groups.
Well, thank you. On behalf of probation, we'd like to thank you for the recognition. Once again, it was the first, and I think I said it to Councilmember Zine on that early morning, it's the first--
What time was it?
At 5:00 a.m., and it was 5:00 a.m. too. While we start that early regularly, I don't believe they do. And it was nice to actually see somebody there to recognize our efforts, encourage our activities for the day, and we do appreciate Councilmembers Zine and Gruel attending. It's important for us to get into these young people's homes, or adults, if the case may be, find out what they're doing. We have to find out if they're involved in graffiti activity, it's the first step, as Councilmember Gruel said, it's the first step to other activities, we need to stop it at this point. I don't like the fact that my property value goes down with tagging, and I know the other people in the community don't. So it's our ambition to address this matter, put these people into custody if they need to be, and clean up the city of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Zine.
I have one more, Madam Chair.
Mr. Zine, if you wouldn't mind, just for a moment, Mr. Carden, oh, okay, we were going to recognize a class, but we'll do it in just a moment.
Okay, go ahead.
Tony, let me recognize Mr. Cardenas to recognize a class.
Thank you very much, council members. I'd like to recognize a group of wonderful young people, and their parents and teachers, from Montague Charter Academy, can you please stand?
Montague.
It's here for Montague. They're here today, starting their whirlwind tour of downtown Los Angeles, here in the city building, they're going to go visit the Disney Concert Hall, and a bunch of other facilities. We just want to say welcome, take some notes, look at this building very closely, because some of you will be sitting in this room, right here with us, well, after we're all gone, and be taking our places. So congratulations for coming to your city hall, this is a beautiful place, it belongs to you, this is your home. Aquí es su casa, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. And let me let the students, and the parents, and the teachers know that tonight, if you go home and turn on the TV at about 8:00 o'clock, you'll be able to see yourselves on TV waving to the camera, and Mr. Zine will be able to as well.
I have a teacher from Montague who has a comment to make.
Thank you so much for inviting us here. Their great curriculum is the local government, and we've had our student teacher, Mrs. Wen Rostro, and she's been teaching us lessons about the government and how it runs. We'd like to say our Montague creed, we stand up and say this every day, we want to have good future citizens, is why we're teachers and good parents. So can everyone say the creed?
Montague Creed, ready? One, two, three. This is a brand new day with wonderful possibilities. I am an exceptional student at Montague Charter Academy. I will make today the best that it can be. I have high expectations for myself. I am an able and dependable student. I will prepare for my future by seeking every opportunity to learn. I will work hard and use my time wisely. I do not have the right to interfere with the teaching of our students in our community. I believe that the choices I make will help what I will have, what I will be, and what I will do in the future, to set us against the enemy.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Madam President, I make a motion that this council adopt that creed for ourselves.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'd like Mr. Cardenas to recite the creed for us.
All right, let me recognize Mr. Zine for his second presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. National Donate Life Month, if I could please call forward Linda Escobar, Tanaya Wallace, and any other representatives for the National Donate Life Month. Linda Escobar, good morning. UCLA Pathology Department, the second living liver donor, you donated liver for your mom. Surgeons at UCLA removed 60% of your liver and transplanted it to your mom, who was suffering from hepatitis C virus. And Tanaya Wallace, manager of communications of One Legacy, good morning. The organ procurement organization for Southern California, and you're responsible for all of the organization's ongoing community programs and public awareness campaigns, including a high school program, workplace partnership program, and volunteer program. And we're trying to inform the community of Southern California the importance of the National Donate Life Month. Organ and tissue donation is a life-giving act, recognized worldwide as the greatest expression of compassion. More than 87,000 individuals nationwide, and 18,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. Every 90 minutes, one person dies while waiting for a donated organ. A single individual donation of a heart, lung, kidneys, liver, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to seven lives, and donation of tissues can save and enhance the lives of up to 50 others. Each year, 25,000 lives are saved, and the quality of life for many others is enhanced by organ and tissue transplant. Many bereaved families find a measure of comfort in donating organs and tissues so that others may benefit. Acknowledges efforts of Donate Life California, formed to create a statewide donor registry to improve the quality of life through organ and tissue donation and transplant. All are encouraged to learn the facts about organ and tissue donation, and to consider making a personal decision to become a potential life-saving donor. And we in the city council recognize April as National Donate a Life Month in the city of Los Angeles. We have a resolution, and also, we have passed out to the council members, Donate Life keychains, and I think those are mints inside the green bag, and the website that people can register, www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, that is the website, organ and tissue donor registry. So it's a very important activity, we need to do publicity on it, so people will know, and I think putting a little sticker on the driver's license helps, in event of a tragedy. We have a resolution, and I'd like to give you the microphones for some comments. And also to introduce the other guests we have, who weren't on my script.
Thank you, Councilman Zine. My name is Linda Escobar, I'm a member of TRIO, which is Transplant Recipient International Organization. With me is our chapter president, Ron Taubman, and I came here today to tell you how I got involved in organ donor awareness. In 1960, my mother needed a blood transfusion after my brother was born. 30 years later, we would come to find out that that very blood that was meant to save her life would be her executioner. That blood was tainted with hepatitis C virus. There was already a crisis in our country, that there weren't enough organs available for transplantation. By the time 1995 rolled around, we were told that if she didn't get a transplant in two years, she would die. And by 1994, excuse me, 1999, we were already running out of borrowed time. With no other hope but a miracle, the surgeons at UCLA removed 60% of my liver and transplanted it to my mother. As Councilman Zine said, there are nearly 88,000 Americans in our country that are facing the same dilemma that my mother did. 18,000 of those Americans, 21% are Californians. And 8,000 of those Californians are Angelenos. There are two very small miracles that can save all these people, people like you and me, people like your mother, your father, your sister, or your brother, God forbid, people like your children, that can be saved. And all it takes is for each and every one of you to decide on your own, that at the time of your death, you want to donate your organs. And then the second miracle is that you tell your family about your desire to give the gift of life. When, until my mother got sick, I never gave organ donation a second thought. I got the little white card in the mail with the pink dot on it, every time I renewed my driver's license, and I didn't give it any more thought than I did the mail we got from the AARP. I thought I was too young to think about discounts at Denny's, and I thought I was too young to think about death. And until my mother got sick, and I became a participant in the world of transplantation, it just never occurred to me. And now, after I've had an opportunity to view some of the miracles of life that have happened, through this gift, that has been given generously by people at a time of such terrible tragedy, I can't imagine that I was ever not an organ donor, any more than I can imagine that I would go through life without life insurance, except for this, being an organ donor, this guarantees life assurance. So I want to thank everybody, thank Councilman Zine for having us here today, and helped us kick off this first day of National Donate Life Month. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel, let me recognize Ms. Gruel also.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski, and I just wanted to stand and to say thank you to all of you and your efforts. And I pulled out my card, so that we could visually remind people that you can include this card with the little pink dot that you take off and put on your driver's license, just to send that message. And during the last month, whatever side you were on, and this issue happening in another state, it has encouraged people to tell their spouses, their parents, their loved ones about their wishes, and particularly, we should about their wishes of organ donors, because it can save a life. And it is such an easy thing for you to be able to do, and so we hope that with your publicizing, and we all got the Donate Life keychains and others, just to remind everyone we meet that they can save a life by filling this out if they so believe that they would like to contribute their organs. So you can get it at the DMV, please do it, carry it with you, so someone's life can be saved. And just thank you for your leadership and commitment to doing this, and I know that all of us want to be helpful in your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel.
Thank you so much. I know, we had talked before, and you pulled out your donor card and said, hey, I'm an organ donor, and thank you, Councilman Zine, you've shown such leadership and passion and compassion for this issue. There's a lot of people who are waiting, and many of them live in your district. This Donate Life Month in April is really important for them, because it's historic. It's the first time that California will actually have an organ and tissue donor registry in the state of California, and that is called Donate Life California. Just as we mentioned, you know, for the past two weeks, we've been talking as a nation about end-of-life decisions. Donate Life California is your advance directive when it comes to organ and tissue donation. If you go on today and sign up at www.donatelife.org, you secure your decision to save up to eight people's lives through organ donation, and enhance 50 others through tissue donation. I want to acknowledge Councilman Weiss, actually, who is going to participate in a press conference on April 4th, and he will be representing Los Angeles in launching Donate Life California Registry. Also, Councilwoman Gruel is looking at her agenda to see if she can join us, and I welcome all of you. I will continue to work with your staff, so that we can get this critical information out to your constituents, so that they know that there's a change in how you secure your decision to be an organ and tissue donor. That little pink dot and that little card is only available to we, as the organ procurement organization, in less than 1% of the cases that we see. When a family member doesn't know what their loved one wants, we are left with an emotional tragedy. So if you go online today to www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, you secure your decision, you help your family, you donate life. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Zine.
Thank you.
For our next presentation, we'll be recognizing Councilmember Padilla. For our next presentation, we'll be recognizing Councilmember Padilla, but while he comes forward, could I ask the clerk to please call the roll?
Cardinals Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Beedigosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 13 members present, Anna Quorum. Madam President.
We are in official session for Friday, April 1st, and I am recognizing Council President Alex Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues, and members of the public, good morning. In addition to the other presentations we've had this morning, I'd like to offer one that's also very fitting. We've already had one gentleman from the military who's been on a couple of tours of duty to the Middle East and preparing for his third tour of duty. We just concluded the National Kickoff Month for donating organs. And in between the two, I think this following presentation is very, very special. I'd like you to please join me in welcoming the members of the United States Army Reserve 349th General Hospital.[657.13][657.13](applause) Let's give them a round of applause, absolutely. These Army Reserves play a very vital role in serving, protecting, and defending our nation. I think over the past few years, we've all become keenly aware of the role that reservists play in the United States military and especially in the United States Army. While reservists make up only 5% of the Army's budget, they make up 20% of the Army's organized units. These are reservist folks, reserves, people willing to serve in the military above and beyond the call of duty and above and beyond their normal jobs. The 349th General Hospital is based here in Los Angeles and plays one of the most critical roles in the Armed Forces. They save lives and they treat the injured. The 349th was deployed to Landstuhl Regional Medical Center in Germany where they replaced the 94th General Hospital personnel. At Landstuhl, the men and women of 349th provided a care for the injured coming out of Iraq and coming out of Afghanistan. And yes, I'm talking about soldiers, talking about sailors and airmen and Marines from forces of 37 allied countries, not just the United States. They served and treated civilian employees, contractors, and even Afghan and Iraqi civilians and Special Operations Forces. In honor of their work to heal the injured and provide medical care for the wounded, the City Council, through our actions today, are declaring United States Army Reserve 349th General Hospital Day in the city of Los Angeles. And I'd like Major Waperschall to come forward to accept this resolution on behalf of the men and women standing behind us here, and let me introduce them by name. The nine reservists who are here with us today include Major Waperschall, Major John Mann, Major Showers, Captain Britson, First Lieutenant Marcel Penn Mathis, Specialist Amanda Kim, Specialist Michelle Panos, Specialist Robert Pose, and Sergeant Arnold Alaman. Let's give them a round of applause.[791.01][791.01](applause)
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Stephen Waperschall, and I am the executive officer of the 349th Combat Support Hospital. We are now transitioning from General Hospital to Combat Support Hospital. The last time I came home from deployment was August 1969 from Vietnam. I was met at the gates with placards and people spitting on us, ushered to a bus, transported to Long Beach, and discharged from active duty. That was the last reception I had from deployment. I had a mantra, ladies and gentlemen, and it was this: "We were the willing, led by the unqualified, to do the impossible for the ungrateful." I have carried that for 35 years. I have been a member of the reserves now for going on 27, 28 years, the last seven or eight with the 349th. By your actions today, ladies and gentlemen, I have changed my mantra to this: "We are the willing, willing to do anything we're called upon to do, led by the qualified, Colonel Reese, Colonel Robles, Colonel Wilson, to do the possible, and by your action today for the grateful." And for this, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you on behalf of the 349th.[888.23][888.23](applause)
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Padilla. For our next presentation, Mr. Garcetti has, let me recognize Mr. Garcetti.[904.86][904.86](pause)
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm sorry, before we can do all three in a row, but I'd like to invite Ed Peterson forward. And on his way here, let me tell you a couple things about Mr. Peterson. He's a native of Hollywood and a founding member of the Theodore Payne Foundation for Wild Flowers and Native Plants. Hold on one second here. Yeah, that should be great. Okay. Founded in 1960, the Theodore Payne Foundation promotes understanding and preservation of California's native flora. Almost 40 years ago, Mr. Peterson created the foundation's Wild Seed Collection Program. This program propagates and makes available to us all the seeds of native plants that are rare in traditional nurseries so that any California garden, including all of yours, I know Mr. Reyes is a very avid gardener among others here, can be a rich California habitat. Our own John Wickham of the Chief Legislative Analyst Office serves as president of this nonprofit organization, and we thank John for his service as well. California's natural heritage is seriously threatened, and Mr. Peterson's efforts contribute to the knowledge, understanding, and appreciation of our state's incredible botanical resources. For those of you who haven't familiarized yourself with the foundation, it's a great time to do so now because their hotline, which informs folks about all the wildflowers, this is an unprecedented year for wildflowers in recorded history because of the rains that we've had. We've read about that in Death Valley, but probably right about now, the poppies should be peaking up in Santa Clarita, so take the family and friends and go see it this weekend. The carpets of color that are all throughout the Southland are just incredible. Mr. Peterson is also the most senior member of the Angeles Chapter of the Sierra Club, and I'm going to cut ahead and cut back for a second. He is turning 100 years old on April 8th, so we're very excited to have him as the most senior member of the Angeles Chapter of the Sierra Club. Please give him a hand for that.[1040.01][1040.01](applause) Among other things he has done, he named the chapter's newsletter, The Southern Sierra, and even though right now he's lost his eyesight, he still takes occasional trips into our wild areas to collect seed for use in horticultural and native vegetation restoration projects, still giving back to all of us as somebody approaching his 100th year. It's Mr. Peterson who locates the stands of oaks, walnuts, poppies, other native plants at just the right time of the year to collect their ripe seeds so they can be preserved and made available to the public. His collections are from esoteric plants of interest to botanical gardens, scientific programs, and native habitat restoration. He has a degree fittingly in botany from that school known as UCLA, class of 1930, and he became involved with the Payne Foundation in the late 1950s. On April 2nd, at 6:00 PM, there will be a special presentation by Greg Rubin on the art of native landscapes, being hosted by the Theodore Payne Foundation at the Eagle Rock Center in Mr. Vieragosa's district, at 2225 Colorado Boulevard, Eagle Rock, and admission is free. But today, we honor Mr. Peterson for his contributions to the understanding and preservation of our incredible native flora. As he turns 100 on April 8th, 2005, we wish him many, many more productive years, and we want to present him with a certificate of birthday greetings and hear from him as well. Congratulations. Please give him a great round of applause.
Thank you, and before we hear from him, let's be recognize Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, and Eric, I just wanted to add my congratulations on his 100th birthday. The Theodore Payne Foundation is in my district, which I'm very proud to have in my district, yes, and so if you have not been there, I do encourage you to come up and visit, not only to see what is there and to learn about the native plants, but also you can purchase native plants and seeds and learn there at this location, and it is just really a hidden treasure in the city of Los Angeles and particularly in my district. So I want to thank Mr. Peterson for his leadership on that, and our own John Wickham, who is always a good constituent in reminding what we need to do to help during the most recent rains.[1177.19][1177.19](laughter) He has easy access here behind the ropes, but just want to say thank you. It's a beautiful facility and one in which we're very proud to have in the city of Los Angeles, and it is something that we should all try to do, is to really, the native plants that we have in the city. So thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your recognition, and we can arrange a tour, can't we, John, for them to come out and see the location, but thank you very much. Congratulations on your 100th birthday.
And now, Mr. Peterson.[1208.58][1208.58](pause)
When I was about to finish my 99-year lease on life, I applied for a renewal of it, but all I could get was a day at a time. But after all, all we need is one day at a time, so why be greedy? I've lived along 100 years now for this award, and it was worth it. And I want to thank those who are donating it to me. I appreciate it very much, and thank you.[1246.26][1246.26](applause)
Bravo, Mr. Peterson, to many, many more years. We thank you for your service, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, and happy birthday to Mr. Peterson, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti. We have one more presentation that will be made today, and let me recognize Councilmember
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask Mr. Ifram Saleem to come up, Salam, and his mom. Basically, what we're here today is to honor a young man that has been a tremendous role model through a variety of sources, although primarily his athletic career, but also dealing with what has been his effort to reach out in at least three communities that he has had the opportunity to play pro sports in. In 1999, and just a few short months after becoming a member of the NFL, he reached the height of many football players' dreams. In his rookie year, he had the opportunity to go to, after being drafted by the Atlanta Falcons, had the opportunity to go to the Super Bowl. Many ballplayers play for decades and have that dream, and in his first year, after having been drafted in the seventh round, he had an opportunity to become a starter for the Atlanta Falcons and played the entire season. He was only the fourth rookie in the history of the NFL to start every regular season game. He also played the playoffs and the Super Bowl. At 22, he was the youngest player to start in the Super Bowl. He also was the lineman of the game in NFC Championship Game. He was also on the All-Rookie Team, was voted on at that time as one of the top 12 linemen that season. He, his formal education started early. He was fortunate enough, not many of us have this good fortune, to have a mom that's a principal, and so he got a chance to literally start his education at the year of, one years of age. His early education experience paid off. He's an honor student, graduated at the age of 16 from Florin High in Sacramento. From there, he earned a scholarship at San Diego State. While in high school, in his first two years of college, he also played basketball along with football. He also threw basketball, that he met and established a strong bond with Deion Taylor, a very talented basketball player who's now his business partner. At San Diego State, he teamed up with the football fans with no these names, Will Blackwell, Kyle Turley, and Asakeem, all of whom from one school were drafted in the 1998 draft, and they're still best friends as they continue their athletic career. After four successful years in Atlanta, he became an unrestricted free agent, and in 2001, he went to Denver and performed there for two years, and began to describe as sportswriters as an outstanding versatile athlete, a scholar, and a gentleman. Since his career started, he has been committed to giving back to the needy. During his seven-year tenure, he's created a nonprofit EMS Foundation, and he's awarded a total of 12 scholarships, spoke to countless schools, K- through adult, mentored youth, fed the needy, shopped for the underprivileged children, donated times and funds to the AIDS projects. He also openly stated that he wanted to be a role model, and he desired to make a difference in today's youth. While with the Broncos, he was awarded the Walter Payton Man of the Year Humanitarian Award, which is their highest honor in that category. Last year, he joined the Jacksonville Jaguars, made an immediate impact on the team and in the Jacksonville community for his outreach effort. As a result, he was honored by the Jaguar Organization and presented the Morgan Stanley Community Leaders Award, which included also a contribution, financial contribution to his foundation. Many honors have been added to his career, which include congressional recognition and proclamation. In fact, the city of Los Angeles declared March 18th as Ifram Salam Day. He credits his success to his creator, caring and supportive parents, and also the members and friends within his community. Today, we honor him because he's taken time from his busy schedule to work with our Eighth District Youth Council, in which he's going to be a part of this week's weekend's program at our constituent center on April the 2nd. And so we're here today to honor him and also with his mom, who's a director at the Maxine Waters Ed Employment Preparation Center, and who also holds a master's degree at UCLA. Wendy, you hear that? UCLA.[1589.53][1589.53](laughter) And...
PhD.
I'm sorry, did I mess that up? Okay. Okay, a PhD, I'm sorry, at UCLA, and a bachelor's degree at Grambling State University. Okay. And she's also the founder and CEO of the International Women's Education Fund. And we also have with us today Mrs. Poindexter-Boden, who's also Ifram's sixth-grade teacher.
Yes.
And so today, we want to honor him and say thank you for taking that active role, but also thank you for what he's done in the NFL and the three cities in which he
Thank you, Councilman Parks, and distinguished council members. For me, it's just about giving back to the communities that I've had a pleasure of growing up in or playing in. So everywhere I go, everywhere I play, thank you.
I don't know that it reaches high enough, but keep trying.
I just, I really enjoy helping people, pretty much just making people's day, and it could be the smallest thing from just stopping and talking to them or, you know, giving out the scholarships that I give out through my foundation, but it's pretty much basically, you know, I want to be remembered, not just for the things I've done on the football field, but the things I've done in the communities, all of the communities I've been a part of, and that's basically where it all comes from. And I'd like to thank my mom, Dr. Salam, as she pointed out. These guys see where I get it from now. But it's been a desire and a passion of mine since I was a child to make people smile and make them happy, and it just carries over into my career and into the things I like to do in the community. Thank you so much.[1709.61][1709.61](applause)
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Parks. I believe that concludes our public presentation ceremonies today, so we will go through the items on the agenda.
First order of business, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Beedigosa moves, Mr. Weiss seconds, the minutes are approved.
Commandatory resolutions for approval.
Those are also approved.
Madam President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Yes, let's go into public comment. This is the period for comment as cards have been received. Let me call first Juana Benavides, Candido Santana, Elizar Lopez Hoi, and Remedio Zapata. I want to lower the microphone.[1764.86][1764.86](noise) And do we need a translator?
Nosotros estamos representando al jardín del sur centro. Bueno, mi nombre es Juana Benavides.
My name is Juana Benavides.
Estamos representando al jardín del sur centro.
We are representatives of the Garden South Central.
We are representatives of the Garden South Central.
Estamos pidiéndole a nuestros representantes, al señor Villarosa y a todos los que nos representan, que por favor pues nos ayuden.
We are asking all your representatives and our representative Villarosa that please help us.
Que si nos pueden resolver acerca de esto, porque ya es bastante tiempo y estamos un poco desesperados.
If you could please resolve this, because it's been a long time and we feel kind of desperate.
Bueno, gracias.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Candido Santana, y venimos representando a los campesinos del Transurcentro Farmer que está en la 41ª Alameda. Venemos a pedirles que nos dejen seguir con el jardín para seguir cultivando nuestras verduras.
Yes, we're here to represent, we're the farmers, and we want to continue to farm our vegetables in South Central.
Y así enseñarle a nuestros hijos nuestras culturas que nosotros traemos desde México. Gracias.
And therefore, to teach our children the vegetables we bring from Mexico. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We had more speaker cards that were submitted. Let me call Mr. Al Benoit, Doug Kortoff, and Velinda Jo Wright.
I'd like to talk about the importance of giving solar energy a boost in the city with appropriate rebates from DWP again, and how coupling electric and plug-capable cars to this plan is a natural winner. It is my understanding that there has been a problem for some time in giving rebates out to customers, and it's my belief that solar energy really needs to be incentivized. So, at a minimum, I would like to see this problem addressed and rectified quickly. Investing in solar is an investment in our future with benefits immediately in the form of clean energy and self-sufficiency. We should support this now more than ever before because we are seeing so many signs of what is to come if we do not alter our course. Rising gas prices, global warming, air pollution, declining natural habitats, and peak oil all only point out the need for change. And the sooner we get on with it, the less painful it will be. There is a plan called Watts Up America, and you can read all about it at wattsupamerica.com. That's W-A-T-T-S-U-P-america.com. The city of Long Beach, California, is seriously considering this plan, and when they actually begin it, it will be a revolutionary step in the right direction. They are realizing that they will be able to save close to $1 million in lighting costs alone in the first year, once installed. I encourage the city of Los Angeles to take a look at this plan and see about implementing it or a variation of it. Built into this plan is the use of truly renewable energy for all new development, supplying 100% of the energy needs of each home with an option for an electric car that the system also covers the energy for. It is also the hope that any city that adopts this plan, that in any city that adopts this plan, no consumer will have to pay more than $0.09 a kilowatt hour. A natural fit for solar and other renewables is the electric or plug-capable car.
Can I ask you to sum up, please?
Okay. So, I was a member of a group of people who participated in a 24-hour vigil in Burbank, which were asking GM not to destroy 77 EV1s held in their lot. GM didn't take us seriously, unfortunately. Change may not be easy, but it is necessary. And I would also like to point out that analysis of our state's electrical capacity shows that we have a capacity for millions of plug-capable cars, and the technology exists now. If you see Business Week online for April 11, 2005...
Again, Mr. Benoit, I'm going to ask you to please sum up. And we have other speakers behind you.
Okay. Anyway, battery technology is improving, and I'd like to see the city of Los Angeles boldly embrace this kind of a plan and show real leadership that will pave the way for other cities to follow in these footsteps. Thank you.
Mr. Kortoff, who will be followed by Velinda Jo Wright.
Pay attention, please, all the councilmen, not only just the Ralph M. Brown Open Meeting Law, but this is the key issue of our time, is the issue of energy independence. The oil problem impinges on every phase of our life, from pollution to the environment, to our dollars, to our lighting bill, to the cost of electricity, to gasoline, and even to our foreign policy, which is dependent upon oil. Now, Councilman Parks was quoted in the newspaper as saying that the cost of electricity, solar electric panels should be no more than $7 a watt. And Councilman, pardon? Seven cents a watt, yeah. Count it, $7 a kilowatt, $7 a watt. Seven cents a watt overall. But, the cost, he's correct. The cost of the panels is $7, to install them is $7 a watt, and it shouldn't be any more than that. Now, one of the problems is with the Department of Water and Power, which the city council has the authority over, oversight authority over, is that they increased their rebates to $6 a watt, which was too much. And they were flooded with applications. This created disarray. Right now, they're up at number 156 out of 500 people waiting for reservations. These are residents of Los Angeles who are putting their dollars on the barrelhead, trying to get solar power, and the Department of Water and Power is AWOL. It is not helping. And we need to, we're going to them on Tuesday, the next meeting, and we're going to be asking them to pay attention to this issue and to clarify the funding so that we have a constant source of dollars. Why is this? Well, it's because, I'll quote in the newspaper today, in the Los Angeles Times, "Conservation remains the most economical way to deal with surges in demand because it is too costly for utilities to build enough to handle short periods of high demand." Solar power, as the graph you saw earlier that I passed out the other day, solar power lowers the peak demand. Now, if you build giant generators, but you can only keep them up working two hours a day, you're not paying $1 a watt, you're paying $11 a watt for those generators. So, by putting in solar power, we're eliminating, this article was about blackouts this summer and another energy crisis, another energy scam. By getting the Department of Water and Power to provide these Californians, these residents who are willing to put out their own money, to be a willing partner, we can reduce the possibility of blackouts. We can give clean energy, and we can start on a solution to our energy problem. As my colleague mentioned, solar power and electric cars are synergies for the future.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's Velinda Wright, and I've witnessed various citizen drivers, as well as an assortment of shop and tow drivers exhibiting erratic, reckless driving practices in front of various mass transit buses, pulling into and out of driveways at sudden high rates of speed, and by making sudden unsafe lane changes in front of the buses to make right turns. The bus drivers' unions are certainly not to be faulted for protecting its members exposed to a daily barrage of unsafe drivers. How's that for sweeps?
Thank you. That does conclude the public comment period. Mr. Clerk, let us run through the agenda items, please.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 11 are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports have been circulated on items 3, 5, and 6.
Members, items 1 through 11 are now before us. Public hearings have been held. There are no comment cards that were received on any of these. So, are there any specials? Mr. Smith.
Ask number 6 to be put off for one week.
Mr. Smith requests item 6 be continued for one week. With no objection, that will be the order. Mr. Parks.
Number 1 special.
Number 1 is called special.
Item 3, please.
Item 3 is called special by Mr. Padilla. Any other items in that list, 1 through 11? Seeing none, those matters are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Actually, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. My questions have been answered on item 3. We can have that go forward.
All right. Item 3 does not need to be called special, so item 3 is now before us, if no one else would like it special. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved.
Next are items 12 and 13, or items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Items 12 and 13 are now before us. There are no cards submitted on those matters. Any specials? 12 and 13? 12 called special by Mr. Parks. That leaves items 13, item 13 on the desk. There is, that is not called special, so let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved.
On the continuation agenda, item 14 is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
Item 14 is now before us. I believe it's the item you would ask to be continued, Mr. Garcetti. Do you want that one's called special?
Do we have staff here today from DOT? Still no staff here from DOT on the hybrid issue?
We could call it special and see if staff is able to be here. We did ask...
Okay, why don't we do that, and we'll see if they can...
All right. Then we will call item 14 special as well. Mr. Clerk, let's, why don't we recess this meeting and go into the special meeting, council meeting for today?
Cardis Garcetti, Grolhon, Labandzla, Lemiskowski, Parks, Perry, Rhea, Smith, Villarosa, Wise, and Padilla. 13 members present, and a quorum. Madam President.
All right. Let's go through those items.
Items 1 through 3 are items which public hearings have been held. On item 3, a motion is required inasmuch as the recommendations do differ.
Items 1 through 3 on the special agenda are before us. Let me recognize Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On item number 3, I'd like to move approval of the Personnel, Budget, Finance Committee report and receive and file the Plumb Committee report.
All right. We have that motion on item 3. Seeing no objection, we then have items 1, 2, and 3 as the motion was made before us. Any specials, 1, 2, and 3? Seeing none. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Parks.
2 and 3 forthwith.
Items 2 and item 3 will go forthwith. I believe we can now...
Item 4 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's continue that to the regular meeting, hold it on the desk, and go back to those items that are called special.
That would take you back to item 1, which was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item number 1.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I have the staff? I just had a couple of questions. First of all, I want to say thank you for your effort. This is probably one of the more comprehensive ICOs that we've ever done, but I just would like to get some timing. What is your perception as to the timing to alter the general plan to cause this to go into effect?
Facial Roble, Planning Department. When this ICO is adopted, the Planning Department has as many as five similar ICOs that are addressing the same issues. And we are doing a court amendment, at least a study, to see how this issue can be comprehensively addressed by amending the municipal code. So, we are addressing this with several alternatives, one of which could be putting in the conditional use permit section of the code, in which case there would be a public hearing anytime such an issue comes for a project permit.
So, if it goes in the municipal code, would that relieve the need for the ICOs?
Yes, and our intention would be to finish the study prior to the expiration date of the ICO.
But, are we saying that the ICO would go into effect while we're amending the municipal code?
It will stay effective until, yeah, such a day comes, yeah.
Because one of the things I'm concerned about is that although this was put on somewhat of a fast track, it's taken us well over a year to get to this point. We only have two years to go with the ICO, and whether there's going to be a lag time of implementation because we only have one year, and then two six-months appeals or extensions. Do we have some idea when we could expect this to be in place?
Actually, as far as I know, we have assigned a city planner to go ahead and collect all the informations, and I cannot speak to the budgeting of the department, but we have already moved on trying to finish this before the ICO expires.
Okay, but that would take us, I mean, you're saying, if we move in that, you're saying maybe a year?
A year, a year and a half possibly.
As far as the municipal code section, but what about the implementation of the ICO and the general plan revision?
The ICO's implementation will start effective the day it's adapted and published.
Okay.
In about 30 days.
Okay, so the day it's published, it'll be in place.
Yes.
And then, are you saying that the general plan, we're making a determination whether we amend that or amend the municipal code?
I think this will only be at the zoning code level. The general plan will not be addressed because this is a zoning issue, not a land use general plan. When it's addressed at the municipal zoning code level, then it wouldn't need a general plan amendment.
Okay. So, those issues will be resolved after the implementation of the ICO?
Yes.
The ICO will be in place within 30 days of our approval today?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Zine. Okay, his questions have been answered. Are there members of the council wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 12 is called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things, I just asked that that be held special because one of the issues that became very clear in the most recent election, I think we had roughly 27% of the public voted, so we lost to Iraq by 40% as it relates to an election. And it comes in light of a recent special survey that was done regarding LA County, where it talks about residents of the city of LA and their level of pessimism as it relates to the future, in which there were more residents of the city that, in the survey, talked about moving out of the city than were willing to vote. And one of the things, and I've talked with Mr. Padilla about this recently, as to whether we, as a body, would need to be able to start looking at ways in which we can begin to look at methods to reduce this level of distrust and anxiety in the community, to begin working at ways in which we get more people involved. At least at one time, there was a view that the neighborhood councils would be that vehicle to get more participation in the electoral process, but it doesn't seem as though that is occurring either. And so, we're working on a motion in hope that we can look at a way in which, as we move forward, that we can eliminate, either through public hearings in a variety of ways, eliminate what is currently viewed as a reluctance or a lack of interest in the very things that we do here daily, and looking at ways in which we can highlight that by the participation in our city government and our state and county government. Recently, we had a visitor from Australia. It's interesting in discussing their election process. It's mandatory to vote in Australia. In fact, there's a fine if you don't vote. And so, they generally move at a rate of about 90% of their electorate votes in all of their elections. And so, that's something that I think is critical for us as a body to begin to figure out why the public, 75% of the voting public chooses not to participate in something as important as our citywide elections. And even on a national level, when there are very volatile elections, we do not get the significant number of people participating. And so, I just throw that out as a means of saying that it appears it's within our hands and our power to begin to look at ways to resolve this, as opposed to some from, one from the outside, creating what may appear to be artificial means of which people then will participate more.
Thank you for that, Mr. Parks. And just as a brief response, Mr. Zine and Ms. Gruel will tell you, we had a very substantive and constructive Rules and Elections Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago on the issues of the two motions that came in, one addressing the ink of vote system, the other motion brought in by Councilmember Gruel on how to increase participation in the electoral process, participation in the electoral process, issues of transportation of ballots, issues of consistency of polling places, and, you know, examples of all of the above. So it is something that the committee's looking at very seriously and will certainly await your motion to add to that discussion. Other council members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Those results are certified. Next item?
Item 14 was being held on the desk for staff from DOT.
Is there staff here from the Department of Transportation for item 14?
Expect it in a few minutes. Why don't we do the closed session, and if they're here in time, when we go back to open session, we'll ask them.
Okay. Do we need to recess and return to the special agenda? We continue to the regular meeting? Okay, is there anything else before going into closed session?
Do you wish to housekeeping?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused to arrive at 10:45 on Wednesday, April 13th for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Reyes is excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Tuesday and Wednesday, April 12th and 13th for personal business, and April 22nd for city business. Both meet council policy.
Mr. Weiss is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused to arrive at 10:30 on Wednesday, April 6th for city business. Meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Vieira Gosa requests to be excused on Wednesday, April 6th, to arrive at 11:00 AM on Friday, April 8th, both for personal business, and those both meet council policy.
Mr. Vieira Gosa is excused.
Councilmember Han requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 AM on Friday, May 6th for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Han is excused.
Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 on Friday, May 6th for personal business. Meets council policy.
That excuse is granted.
And Councilmember Smith requests to be excused on Wednesday, April 6th for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Smith is excused.
That would clear the desk for closed session.
Okay, if there's nothing further, then in conformance of California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sergeants, would you please clear the chambers? Welcome back into open session. Mr. Clerk, next item before us, please.
On the closed session matter, there is a recommendation to approve the settlement in the amount of $490,000 in the case of Carvin versus City of LA.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please.
That leaves item 14, which I believe is going to be continued to Tuesday, April 5th.
Mr. Garcetti moves continuance on item 14 to this Tuesday, that would be April 5th. There's no objection. That item is continued. Next item, please.
That does clear the desk.
Okay. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Any announcements? Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Along Hollywood Boulevard between Western and Vermont, this Sunday morning, there will be a Thai festival and parade. I know Ms. Gruhl will be there as well, representing the Thai wad in her district, but we're going to have a lot of folks there, great food, the beautiful parade, Thai culture, blessing of the water, traditional Thai festival, and so we invite folks to come out, and we hope to see there. There's also at the Convention Center, the traditional High Holy Day for the Sikh religion will be at the Convention Center this weekend. Also, in the middle of the day, throughout a number of hours, we invite folks to come and celebrate by Sikhie, and we want to share in that with all the Sikh population of Los Angeles as well.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Announcements? If there's no further announcements, let me mention a couple, one that'll affect us in council. Next Wednesday, I've heard that funeral services for Johnny Cochran will be held next Wednesday, and I believe it's at either 10 or 11:00 AM. There's a number of members who have been excused to be absent that day, a couple of other members who have expressed an interest in attending those services. So quorum may be in question for next Wednesday. We'll figure that out by Tuesday, but just want to give everybody a heads up on that. Ms. Missakowski? Tomorrow as well. Good news for the City of Los Angeles is the inaugural game for Chivas USA, a Major League Soccer expansion team, making their debut here at the Home Depot Center in our neighbor city of Carson, California. They're playing the DC United, and it is a very big deal for the league, and I think a very big deal for the City of Los Angeles. Any other announcements? Mr. Cardenas.
I'd just like to announce the No Ruze Celebration this Sunday. It's going to be going on all day with fun and festivities and lots of wonderful food and music, and it's a great opportunity, and it looks like the weather's going to be gorgeous this weekend. And I just want to invite all Angelenos and beyond to go enjoy the free festivities over at the No Ruze event, which is at the Balboa Park, or otherwise known as the Povida Basin, which is on the corner of Victory and Woodley, Victory and Balboa, et cetera. It's 2,000 acres, so once you get in the general area, you'll find it. Again, the No Ruze Celebration, last year they had as much as 20-plus thousand people all day, and it looks like it'll be just as successful this weekend in the San Fernando Valley.
Mr. Garcetti.
Just one other brief announcement. It's tough. It's kind of like having a birthday on Christmas, and nobody notices it because we didn't have council yesterday, but it was Mr. Cardenas's 42nd birthday yesterday, so I wanted to, oh, I mean, it was his 24th birthday. I always get the numbers mixed up, but wanted to wish Mr. Cardenas a very happy birthday from all of us in the city council.
Happy birthday, Mr. Cardenas. Shares one of the best birthdays of the year with a legendary figure in history, Cesar Chavez. Any other announcements? My final announcement of a community activity taking place this weekend, our annual Cesar Chavez March for Justice out in the San Fernando Valley will begin at 11:00 AM with a gathering and rally at Brand Park in Mission Hills, and will proceed via procession to San Fernando Park in the City of San Fernando, the annual Cesar Chavez March and Walk for Justice this Sunday, beginning at 11:00 AM. For more information, call 888-756-9115. And if there are no further announcements, if I can ask everybody to please rise for adjourning tributes. The first, not an adjourning motion, because we continue to receive conflicting reports about the status of the Pope, but I appreciate standing for a moment of silence earlier in the meeting for his spirit and his health. As you all know, he's been in very grave medical and health conditions and worsening, so we will continue to monitor the condition of a historic figure, one who's visited the City of Los Angeles on multiple occasions. So we ask that you keep him in your prayers. Ms. Missakowski?
May I just add on that, Mr. President, that for those who may be listening to this, that there is a mass being conducted apparently by 12:15 at the Cathedral of Our Lady of the Angels today, so any people who are within listening distance, city employees and the like, who would like to spend their lunch hour in that way, that is available.
Adjourning tributes? Mr. Zine.
I have two. The first is a retired lieutenant with the Los Angeles Police Department, Albert Santor, passed away on March 25th. Al Santor was 80 years of age, born September 15th, 1924, served 31 years with the Los Angeles Police Department, and retired as lieutenant. During his last assignment, he served at the Van Nuys Station as the watch commander. Al Santor served World War II and then joined the California Air Guard, excuse me, which he served 30 years. He was a resident of Van Nuys for 50 years. After retirement, he lived in Palm Desert and in Oregon. Loved to travel with his wife, also retired member of the Los Angeles Police Department, Sherry Santor. He was a great husband, father, great-grandfather, and will be truly missed, and I had the honor and pleasure of working for Lieutenant Al Santor when he was at Van Nuys. He is survived by his wife, Sherry, five children, 10 grandchildren, four great-grandchildren, six brothers, and one sister, Lieutenant Albert Santor. May he rest in peace. The next tribute is for a man who was driving down the road on March 30th when a tree fell and killed him in his car, Sheldon Miller. This occurred in Tarzana. Sheldon Miller, 75 years of age, born January 12th, 1930, was driving on Reseda Boulevard at Mecca in Tarzana at 10:26 in the morning when a 75-foot pine tree toppled on his Jeep Grand Cherokee, declared dead at the scene. Resident of Simi Valley, owned an auto repair shop. Was born in Chicago, moved to California when he was three. He will be greatly missed by all who knew him. He is survived by his wife, Michelle, three sons, and six grandchildren. May Sheldon Miller rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other tributes? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.